Tonight, we have a one timed event. It's with Mr. Jason LaFlore for a preliminary subdivision plan. And then after that, we're gonna have a continued public hearing, which we had opened up in our last meeting two weeks ago, on a revised subdivision regulations. We'll have any additions for discussion, with the consent of the members' minutes, bills. We have at least one bill there to pay. Our town planner report, and then our member report. It should be at seven o'clock, or thereabouts. I'm gonna open the public meeting. So this is a public meeting, not a public hearing. We don't necessarily have a right for the public to be part of this proceeding, but we, of course, will, if there's people in the room, we'll let you speak after there's been a presentation for the preliminary subdivision plan. So, um, this is a plan for a subdivision that's gonna run a road from Aldrich to Jason's Way, straight through for eighteen lots. We haven't seen a subdivision plan come in here in quite some time. Just an initial question for Mr. Doug, 'cause we are doing new subdivision regulations, which are very close to being approved. Now that they put in the preliminary, does the final come in under the new regulation, or the old regulation?
Old regulation.
So we're gonna have to keep the old regulation around to process this plan. So one of the things that we're gonna ask is how fast you're gonna be bringing through the full subdivision plan.
Very quickly.
Because we are, well, we were gonna try to get them approved tonight. I don't know if we're going to. Going into a new set of subdivision regulations with a lot of changes in them. We'll be processing this one under the old one. And I passed out a copy of the plan to everybody.
All right, my first start on the camera.
Sure. The town planner has a family in that area, and he would prefer not to be part of this presentation or review. All right, so. The actual review of the submission was done by myself, not by the town planner.
Okay.
And then he's not gonna speak tonight. So with that, you've got your representatives here, and you've got a plan up there. You wanna give us an overview of what you propose to do?
Yes, thank you very much. Good evening. My name is Jeff LeBeau, professional civil engineer with Sherman Frederick and Palmer, representing Jason LaFlore, the applicant. Also with us is Michael O'Brien, one of the property owners. So this preliminary subdivision encompasses three parcels. On this overall are Sheet One. We have two sheets for the preliminary subdivision plan. And on Sheet One, we have an overall locust plan. Can you see that okay? Let me turn it. So we see the little orange right here. That's our proposed road. We're naming it Nishimun Path. That's the proposed name. It's named after Michael's deceased daughter. So it has very special meaning.
Grandmother.
So, I apologize about that. So the road is proposed to be sixteen hundred linear feet, and it is proposed to connect Jason's Way, which is an existing through road, to Meadow Pond Road off of Aldrich. And Nishimun Path is proposed to connect Jason's Way to Aldrich Street. We were able to obtain eighteen conforming lots, two of those which would be flag lots or street lots. So now I'm gonna flip to Sheet Two, which kinda shows the same orange path, but the orientation is now different. So north on this plan is in this direction. This is north. So Jason's Way is here. Meadow Pond Road with the cul-de-sac here. And Aldrich Street, which comes up this way. And then it deadends down here. As you can see, we have put a lot of work into this plan. And this is the preliminary. But behind the scenes, we have been also concurrently working on the definitive. So to kinda answer your question, I would say within two to three weeks, we'd be ready to submit the definitive, depending on how this meeting goes, and any other information, questions that come up, or data needed by the planning board. So again, we have had the wetlands flag and survey located. And this is also a true ground survey. It's not LiDAR. So Sherman Frederick has surveyed the whole proposed subdivision plan. He's also done soil testing for proposed stormwater management. But just to see the road itself up here. Some water straightaway, and then a slight bend coming into Aldrich. And we have our front block here. The two flag lots are located in this direction, more towards the south, more towards Aldrich Street. And they flag this way, and then they flare out. Now, those two bigger lots also have some of the wetlands on them, but there's plenty of buildable land just outside the one hundred foot buffer zone. We are also proposing, we did consider, and we went back and forth with Jason, we did consider low impact development, but for various reasons, it didn't quite make sense in this situation. Even though the soils are good, we didn't wanna create any unnecessary ponding or artificial berms on people's front lawn. So what we're proposing is the low K-Cod berms, the tumbus K-Cod berms, and a traditional pipe stormwater system to two to three different stormwater basins. One stormwater basin would be in this general area, in the Lot G location. And then the other one would be where Lot I is, kinda behind Michael's house here, on this lot. We're proposing some drainage easements so that the town or homeowner association, whatever the town's requirements are for those easements, but we are proposing those at this stage to access where we're envisioning these stormwater features to be. Jason, is there anything else that you wanna add?
Um...
Too many bells and whistles on this.
Yeah, I mean...
More of a through road.
Yeah. I mean, the good thing for Aldrich Street is now the buses should be able to loop around and not pick up the kids at the end of Aldrich and Jason's Way. 'Cause there's no turnaround at the end of Aldrich Street.
No, that's correct.
You need us to cut through.
The buses will be able to cut through now. And there'll be a shorter, there'll be a shorter dead end of Aldrich.
Yeah, from here up to now. Buses will have wider radiuses?
Could you, could you cut that somehow? I guess, this is the first. Never had that happen.
It used to happen at the PVC meeting, Zoom meetings. Pretty regular.
If you can't cut it off, just shut down, we're gonna shut down GoTo. I'm not gonna, okay, there we go. I'm not gonna have that going on. I'm sorry. Could you continue up where you were speaking?
What I was saying is, the buses will also have wider journey radiuses here, you know, and repaving. So it'll work, you know. And then folks here in their homes will be able to exit this way, and some of these folks will be able to. It'll give folks more exits and entrances. It'll help traffic flow and definitely.
Does that mean that school buses will not go on Aldrich? They will not exit via Aldrich?
I don't know which way they would go.
Well, they couldn't go all the way to, they had to turn at Jason's Way, because they couldn't turn around at the end of Aldrich. There's no...
If you structure there, it's pretty challenging.
So now, so now it's going to extend that, so.
So where do they stop now, Jason?
They stopped at the bottom of Jason's Way at Aldrich.
Yeah.
Okay. So now the buses are able to go down here?
No, they go, they go through. They go through. They go from Aldrich, Jason's Way, and then keep going. The kids from the top walk to that corner.
Oh, they have to come down.
Yeah, but there's not many younger kids up in those houses anymore.
So I suppose in that, in that regard, it'll give additional length here, and those kids don't have to walk as far for, you know, for the bus now. But I'm open to, that's our basic presentation. Have any questions, questions or details, questions?
Okay, I made a part of my review. I asked a few basic questions. The expected timing of the final plan or definitive plan, and you're saying two to three weeks?
Correct.
That quickly, okay. And what is your expected build out time? How long do you figure between the first shovel full of dirt and having the project developed?
Just the roadway or the block?
The whole thing, and accepted by the town. We'd like to know how long your subdivision is going to be in existence, your plan, I mean.
I mean, we're not gonna build all the houses, of course, 'cause that's just, depends on the market. But I'm hoping to have the road finished within two, three, three years plus or less. Accepted.
And accepted to the, by the town.
Yep.
And will that be contingent on how many lots are actually sold?
A little bit, but it's just timing, weather, winters.
Okay, well, we're just trying to, since no phasing was indicated with your plan, like a Phase One developer, Phase Two, so we could look at how it was going to be structured over time. It's gonna be one development, all tackled at the same time?
Correct.
And you're figuring it's gonna be about three years until you sell it all?
Till it's, yeah, finished off.
Yeah, okay. And, excuse me, sorry. Are you saying three years for, for everything, or three years for the road? I wanna be clear.
For the road.
Right, so not to build out?
No.
Right, no, that would be road infrastructure and basins and acceptance.
Gotcha. Sorry. No, if anybody has anything else, please just come right in. I just have a couple of basic ones I was gonna ask. When the subdivision is gonna be under construction and houses are being built, who's gonna be maintaining that road in terms of snow removal and such as that?
I believe now the town, I'm talking to the DPW, they're gonna want me to.
We're gonna be looking for some kind of assurance with your final plan, that you're prepared to maintain the road in all of its expenses, including snow removal and any maintenance on the road through the time it's accepted by the town. And this is not singling out you in particular. This is something we're bringing down on all subdivision development. Because in the past, there's been some issue with the town having to plow the, sort of essentially private roads until the town takes it over. And we don't want any misunderstanding or argument about that. As long as it's your road, we want you paying for all the expenses going out there. And if you don't, we're gonna keep tab on it, and we're gonna try to collect it.
That's right.
So. And then the other immediate question I had was, the back of Lot K has a piece of an existing detention basin in it. K is one of the O'Brien parcels in the back. You see that, that?
Right here.
The, yeah, it's the drainage off of Meadow Pond Road. And part of it, that drainage now basin is on Lot K. Are you gonna have some kind of easement?
Yeah.
Separate easement prepared for that?
I believe there's already an easement.
There's already an easement on it?
Right.
That now has been accepted by the town. So there's gonna be no issue with whoever's gonna go into K?
No, because the building, if you look at that blue line, the building's gonna be on this, the lower side of it. If you look at the wetland.
The wetlands.
Yeah. So there'll be nothing going on past that blue line.
Yeah, so all the development has to happen in here, basically, on this lot. But I think your point was that that property line goes over that.
Yeah.
But to Jason's point, there's already an easement there. That easement would transfer onto Lot K. And it wouldn't impede any, any work or development that Lot K could do.
You mentioned when you started that there were three parcels? I was, I was following that they were two, and that at, that the forty, that two forty-five dash fifty-six was probably involved principally to facilitate the state lots and also the beginning of the road. But you mentioned three parcels.
What, that were flag lots?
That were related to...
Oh, and we believe it's three overall properties, correct? Or...
Two, okay. And two parcels total?
It's three overall parcels.
Two parcels.
The O'Briens.
Yeah, three parcels, but the two owners.
Yep.
Yeah, right. Yeah, so the owners are LaFlore and his son, and Michael and the Keith O'Brien. And then the applicant is Jason. It's separate from LaFlore and his son.
So when I did my driver recertification today, and went back and forth several times, you've got guardrails at the spot on Jason's Way, where, I presume is where the road was gonna start? It was a little hard to tell from the edge. It looks as though there's something of a drop off there. And is there a culvert, or it looks a little damp? And I'm just wondering...
There is a culvert.
Yeah, right here. It looks like there's two culverts.
Right.
So are the guard, why are there, are the guardrails there? That's often a...
It's just for the drop off.
Yeah, that's for the drop off.
Well, plus you got the bend, so folks are not paying attention when they're going real fast, you know.
A small...
So you're gonna have a big grade change there to get in and out of that?
It's the be, it's the beginning of the guardrail.
Right. It'll be a little bit higher in elevation, but we'll modify whatever we need to be here once we actually do the full design right there, to make sure that's not like a, you know, a steep drop off. To make sure it's graded out for safer vehicles.
And on the, on the Aldrich side, is that, I mean, I was sort of facing it on where the other houses, where there's a roped off area with what looks like, is that where the road will exit onto Aldrich?
Does it show the, does it show the existing path with it?
But there is an existing, like a dirt, dirt drive up. And I think, isn't there like a metal gate there?
It seemed like a right...
There is one.
I think it's just a rock.
That's a trip field, yeah, it's just a...
Yeah, I could see some piles of something.
Yes, yes, yes.
So that's, okay. So that looks as though there's not such of a great change there.
It's a little, goes a little bit up, but it's not much.
Thank you.
Anybody else have general questions? Yeah, sure.
I wanna start with, the remaining land Lot R. Is that contiguous, contiguous unsubdivided land? And if so, do you have any plans, future plans at all to develop that or to subdivide that at a later date?
What's R, Jeff?
I can only answer the most part of that question, and it's yes, it is remaining land of. As far as future development, I can't answer that. I think most of it's wet.
That's just, that's just a swamp, I believe.
But do you have, do you have...
That is not my property.
That goes way down.
So it's, it's LaFlore and his sons incorporated.
Correct.
It's Lot R, and you've got two Lot Rs on this drawing.
Right, and the remaining, this remaining R seems to be for the pieces that go in the direction of Saban Street, not where Road...
I wanna get, and where I'm headed eventually is traffic and congestion. So that's where I'm trying to get an understanding of the un, the contiguous unsubdivided land. Do you have any intent of...
It shows right here. So it's, it's basically, it's just like here, which is landlocked. You have a frontage up here. And there's only a tiny bit of frontage up on here. And most of it's wet.
Most of it's swamp.
Otherwise, it probably, it probably would've already been developed.
Yeah, it's not usable, but we're only taking part of that.
Right.
Right now.
To help with these two red flag.
I have no plan of anything with the rest of that.
Okay, that's, that's what I wanna hear. The answer is no.
Maybe it's a hundred and seventy-seven feet at Where Road, which is mill front.
It's swamp.
Yeah.
So all, that whole thing is swamp.
So my next concern is traffic. And there's actually, I think, four issues in my mind that from a traffic engineering standpoint, I would want to make sure gets clearly addressed. One is the additional traffic load going out onto Where Road itself. That intersection is at a peak and coming from the west. There's a very short line of sight. So when you do the tra, when your traffic engineers do the traffic study, that will be of a particular concern, is that extra traffic that we're gonna be introducing, and whether or not the line of sight is sufficient to handle it.
That line of sight was already taken care of when we did the design for Meadow Pond.
When you did the design for Meadow Pond, did you include all of the traffic from these eighteen lots?
Got you. But either, but either way, adding traffic, you still need that line of sight. Even though you have more cars, still have, need that.
I'm not a traffic engineer. And I just wanna make sure that your traffic engineer takes a look at what the new total load will be, including any houses on, or any development that is on the contiguous unsubdivided land, and takes a look at that intersection and make sure that we're safe.
Right, right. So what we can do...
The second area, second area, is Aldrich Road itself is fourteen, seven wide, sixteen feet wide. And there's, you know, I've had anecdotal discussions that in the wintertime, cars actually have to come to a stop in order to get around each other. And so now we're gonna be introducing a significant load onto that very narrow road. So again, your traffic engineers, and if that road needs to be widened, then we need to know it. But your traffic engineers need to study that and make sure that that's, that can handle it, especially if we're gonna be having school buses down there. The third area is the one-way bridge. That we now have additional load, additional two-way traffic on a one-way bridge. And I don't know how much, how much it's gonna increase, but that's another area that your traffic engineers are gonna have to look at and assure us that that's adequate. And then the fourth and last one is where Aldrich enters onto Mill Valley. It's a very sharp acute angle. And again, I think the line of sight is probably good, but I'm not a traffic engineer. And we're gonna increase the load, increase the traffic, so I wanna make sure that that's looked at as well. So when your traffic engineer looks at it, he's not looking at just these two intersections, but rather the impact that this will have on the feet, the main roads as well. Okay? Um, and I think that's it for the, for the traffic issues. You're not asking for any waivers, correct?
I don't believe so.
There are no waivers with the application that was proposed.
Are you gonna have sidewalks on both sides of this new road that you're installing?
It's durable. I think it's always on one side.
Just one side.
Okay.
And would that be the same side that Jason's Way currently has? I think that's on the opposite side.
Those four lines.
Jason's Way is on the opposite?
Yeah.
Well, because of the guardrail, yeah, it's obvious, isn't it?
Well, there's guardrails on both sides.
No, if you visualize in your mind that guardrail and the drop off, there's no sidewalk there. You said you've already done the soil testing?
For stormwater management.
For stormwater management. And, and just out of curiosity, how many, how many bore sites?
We did, we did three per basin. Jeez, we did a lot. We did three up here, three over here, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine. Twelve, ten, eleven, twelve. Twelve to fifteen, I'll have to check our records. We were basically following the mass BP's stormwater management policy. I mean, it's a little bit of a...
That's what I wanna make sure.
Keith and I, Keith, Keith is the, Keith Terry's the other engineer in the office, and he and I concurred that let's just do three per base and call it a day so it doesn't come into question later through the peer review. So we do have that data in the soils, we're pretty good. It's mostly loamy sands. In this general area, it was almost like a ridge here. And you can kinda tell how the soil has shifted. It's pretty neat up here. These should be well draining. Out back here, they're a little, still decent, you know, but they shifted from a loamy sand into a sandy loam, which is a little finer, but still really, I imagine we're gonna get really good perforates because then these are gonna be, as I didn't mention, well, no subjects, obviously, for this area. You're probably still gonna get twenty minutes of management.
Even though you're in very close proximity to the wetlands and the standing water and...
Yeah, but that's why it gets finer, you know, as this, as this, as we passed the ridge and it came down, so it did make sense. We'll still be able to get adequate stormwater management.
The proposed fire protection easement, is that a underground system? What, you're just leaving that open?
Okay.
And then the three...
To be determined.
To be determined, yeah. The three proposed drainage easements on Lot FG and H. What, what are those?
So those are, those are gonna be for our proposed stormwater management features, which will be linear type basins. They'll have sediment four base. We're gonna have, essentially, elevationally, Jason's Way's higher, and the road comes down this way.
Right.
So we're gonna capture what we can and funnel some, some of the stormwater this way, and then funnel some out this way. Because these are the two low points existing, and we're trying to mimic that same general pattern, which again is part of what civil engineers are supposed to be doing, is mimic it as closely as possible, not totally change drainage patterns. So those easements are so that we, either we, I don't know if the town requires a homeowners association, or if the town takes over stormwater features, but we're proposing those easements so that management and cleanup can happen in those four base and basins as needed. Yeah, answered that question?
Yes, it did, thank you.
Can I just ask also, are, are, do any of the folks call this out as, what is this one for? Is that...
I, I have to look at our definitive plans. 'Cause like I said, we designed it concurrently. And because it's, there's not really a low point or like a sag point where we collect. We need, we need this management for like a linear basin. Essentially, what we're doing right here at the tail end, we can't just take the water and flush it out. So we're crowning the road, and we're splitting it, and then putting it through a water quality square here and a water quality square here. That's my best recollection. And then I think it's just infiltration with some standard overflow. But it does get tricky. So it is kinda like low impact development at the end, but most of the bulk of the management is happening near G, and then over behind, okay, we do have two Rs, yeah. So we got J, and then this one.
Lot R.
Yeah, Lot R.
The first R. R one.
And then, I, well, two, two last things. One is the radius, exit radius from the new road onto Aldrich. Because Aldrich is so narrow, has that radius been significantly rounded so that buses and delivery trucks and, and moving vans?
I don't know what I've done. I had a, wanna say twenty-five feet. I can see that this is why I brought, that's why I had to go get my meters.
Well, I guess my question is, have you made special...
It's for the town standards. Whatever the town standards.
So the town standards aren't necessarily taking into account...
How narrow, how narrow Aldrich is there?
Oh, you're saying from here?[1766.42] Oh, you're saying from here, no, it's gonna be adequate for turning movements, getting vehicles from here onto the road.
And from the road onto Aldrich.
Coming this way, we'll have to, we'll have to put a template on there and take a look.
Okay, that's, that's.
But the radiuses on the new road are more than adequate. I just don't know.
It's, it's, it's kinda like following something too small, called, in terms of what.
Right, well, from here down, I mean, it's very low, it's very low volume. So, it wouldn't really create a hazard, but, well, I'll get a, I'll get that specific.
Just, that, that. You want to know if we need to make it bigger on that?
Yeah.
That'll be an area of concern on the final plan, okay?
We just really take a look at that.
And then last but not least, and it's not written in our old regulations, but as the chair alluded to, um, this is a private way, and this is a private road, and there are no town services until such time as it's accepted by the, the, the town at an annual town meeting. And we are, in the future, going to be asking that there be a prominent sign at each end that, that informs everyone that it is in fact not a, not yet a town road, and that town services will not be available.
Okay.
Okay?
So, that stays in place until, uh?
Until it's accepted by the town and, and becomes a, an official.
So, it needs to be labeled on both ends?
Well, that's under the new regulation.
He says the new regulation, but he's just saying, make sure we understand that it's a private.
But we're still gonna, you know, try to enforce any, well, our, our worry is that the snow doesn't get plowed. And then people start calling up and saying, hey, I'm paying my taxes, they're already in the house, and they want a snowplow out there that, uh, you're responsible for. And if you, if you don't cover that, that obligation, that we're going to try to find some way to make you pay it in future, okay?
I expected that.
And that's all I have, thank you.
Um, I've got some other notes here about, uh, what we would be looking for in the definitive, but first I'd wanna make sure that you have any, if you have anything behind you you wanted to add.
I just wanted to be clear on the wetland delineation, it was not confirmed yet. The letter I have from the Conservation Commission is from the tenth.
It's from when?
It's from June tenth.
There's a.
Of what, this year? Have you?
The tenth of this year.
Conservation sent that letter, just saying that we haven't gone through Conservation yet.
Oh, yeah, no, we, no, we have not, we're just starting to talk. But those, yeah, these were flagged earlier this year, conservable to, yeah, we have full intention.
That was all I had.
Uh, we did get a couple of letters here from, uh, one from Linda de La Duque, the Director of Public Works. Do you guys have that yet?
I, I have it. When was it submitted?
How far, Linda?
Stated the eighteenth, just, talk about what's on it, and I'll hand it, hand it to you right now. Uh, June eighteenth, yeah. The design and scope of work for the project should include provisions to protect existing roadside drainage along Jason's Way and Aldrich Street as a minimum drainage structure to sidewalks within the project limits should be designed to sit at a lower grade than the existing street grades prevent water, stormwater from entering the abutting roadways. Two, what is the drainage easement along Aldrich Street for?
Let's, we talked about soil.
Okay. And then, um, she made comment about the, that bridge. The additional traffic this project will bring to Aldrich Street may warrant a yield sign to be installed at the one-way bridge, including some roadside improvements for a pull-off area on the southward side of the bridge. So, you'll, you will take her comments, I'm sure, into consideration when you do your final. And then, uh, we also got a letter from, um, the Conservation Commission. Now, they haven't completed their full review yet, but they did send a letter dated June tenth. The wetland delineation, it's, you, I'm gonna hand you the letter so you don't have to keep jotting. I'm just gonna put them into the record. The wetland delineation has not been confirmed by the commission or its agents, so wetland determination, uh, delineation confirmation will be required. They were proposed within the, the commission's jurisdiction would require obtaining a wetlands permit pursuant to Wetlands Act law. Well, you know, you're gonna have to go through stormwater process. Uh, any land disturbed activity in excess of ten thousand square feet has gotta go through the stormwater management bylaw. So, there's those two letters.
Thank you very much.
See, I have that for your records. Just some general comments. The traffic analysis that you're going to do, Mr. Hoffer went into that. I, I too am very interested in that. Just stepping back in time, I think I'm the only one that's on the board now that was on when Meadow Pond Road subdivision was approved.
Okay.
I voted no on that, the only one. But I voted no because I didn't like the sightline distance on Route nine. And the, the analysis that came in, if I remember right, was based on the speed limit, not on any study of how fast people are actually going. And, you know, my experience, living there many years, is that people take that particular area at, at speeds that may exceed the speed limit. So, uh, I was looking at it from the perspective of how fast people were actually gonna be coming when you tried to come out of that road, and I went in there today, like Elizabeth did. Uh, and it's getting a little overgrown in there, and I, I don't, I'm not comfortable with the sightline distance on Route nine. So, I, I think your traffic engineer needs to have a little bit more of an explanation than, uh, well, it's already an existing road, so that's what we're laying our cards down on. If you're gonna add more traffic from it, and it's gonna be based on this additional subdivision development, that it really should be based on a fresh look at, at that intersection, okay?
Yeah, I mean, everybody intends to build something that's safe. It's never our intention to build something that's unsafe. I mean, that's one of our, our views as professional engineers. I'm not a traffic engineer, but a lot of site civil engineering has overlapped with transportation slash traffic, et cetera. So, I mean, I can speak to sightlines pretty well. I can speak to certain trip generations that are generated by the, you know, the I T E traffic manual, trip generation manuals, and we can do that type of data. If any specific studies are requested or required, then we have to hire a more specialist who go out and lay the tubes out, and get accounts, and so on. I don't personally think that's necessary in this case, to, to answer your question.
But it's.
Speed studies, I mean, essentially posted speed limits, well, I mean, this is Route nine, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Is it still state?
Yeah, it's state road.
Right away, uh, uh, management here, so we would have published data on this, which we can obtain. And if the sightline, you, you know, we, we can modify it. I, I don't wanna speak for you, Jason, but if there's anything that would make it safer, we would, we would want to implement that. And then also just to not, to diminish it too much, but eighteen single-family homes? You're really not generating that many more trips. It's thirty-six trip, trip outs, you know, eighteen houses. Most likely half are gonna go out this way, the other half will probably go out that way. That's how you, you know, when you do the network and you spread it out.
Yeah, but, you know, listen to what I'm saying, I wasn't happy with it to be before. You know, and you're taking another swipe at it now.
Very, very clearly you started with, you're not a traffic engineer.
Correct.
Thank you. Let's get a traffic engineer and make sure that what we're doing is the correct thing.
And I know you, you're not building Aldrich, so, but if that is, I lived on Mill Valley Road, and people are coming from the turnpike, and that is an off, I'd turn right on that, on eight one eighty-one, but I would not try to turn left there. So, although that's not a problem of you making, given that there will be more people coming, we don't wanna make it worse. And frankly, I don't think.
But, but, one of, one of the questions is, does the infrastructure exist to support the?
More.
The more traffic?
Exactly. Well, frankly, I don't think a yield sign is sufficient to deal with that bridge.
One-way bridge.
Well, we're not gonna tell them how to do it. We're just, you know, tell you that the traffic analysis needs to come in, and, um, it would behoove you to take a close look at it before you. Okay? It's, the responsibility for how they do it is, is theirs.
Yeah.
Right, we're not gonna tell them how, right? Um, you're gonna do your environmental analysis, stormwater design and permit, you know about that? The fire, fire systems have been planned. Uh, your manner, you wanna give us your, an indication of your manner of performance guarantee? Right, you're gonna, you're gonna do cash, you wanna have lots but in covenant? You know, you just decide what you're gonna do and make sure that that's there. Uh, maintenance pending acceptance, as we discussed. Your, any form of easements you're going to do are gonna need to be part of the definitive plan. So, you need to have them punched up. Uh, any open space that you're going to have as a set aside here, there isn't really any. It's all gonna be held in, in some kind of private development. Your wetland mapping, you know about, uh, are you gonna have any, are you gonna file a forest plan to, to cut the vegetation and the trees in there? Are they mature trees that have commercial value, or is this just a land clearing operation?
I assume it's gonna be a land clearing operation, but.
If you're gonna, if you're gonna timber it, it'll, you're gonna file a, a forest cutting plan with the Conservation Commission, okay?
Is it currently in chapter?
I think it's A and A, but is it in chapter status for?
I believe so. Wait, Mike?
Yes.
Yes.
So, you're, as you go along, you're gonna have to come along and ask for releases from the chapter status too. And, um, that's all the comments I had. You wanna make sure the definitive plan is thoroughly fleshed out. So, uh, when we receive it, we can make a determination as, and have a peer review as, as quickly as possible so we don't drag out a decision on this, on this project. Anybody else have anything else?
Well, I was gonna ask if you thought about open space. It seems like if you have a ton of wetlands over there, it might not be a bad thing to.
I will, uh, talk to the owner of that land.
And I'm assuming that you'll have to come back for an A and R to get these two parcels or the estate lots packaged in with?
Yeah. Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, for bad lots.
Do you have any questions before we turn it open to the public? Again, this is a, a public meeting, it's not a public hearing, but we do have some people here from the, the public, and we wanna be polite and make sure that if you have something to say, you have an opportunity to say it. Did you wish to address the, the board on this proposal tonight?
Yeah, I'd like to ask Jason specifically, cause I'm not, I live at thirty-six Jason Way.
You wanna just, yeah, just tell us, yeah, who you are.
Thirty-six Jason Way.
We know who you are, but, you know, for historical purposes.
So, I'm, I'm on the property for which the road's gonna go next to. So, I just would like to understand where exactly, so, right now, we maintain part of the property. It's been, it's grass, right, and then there's a, a lot of trees. There's, that's a lot when we purchased the property in twenty-seven, two thousand and seven. It was always supposed to be a lot, I knew where the house was gonna go. So, I'm just trying to understand where exactly does the road go? Does it go at that end of the guardrail, or is it going in the middle of the guardrail?
So, I, I, I was looking at where your mailbox is, and it's about forty-five feet from your mailbox is where the fif- where the fifty-foot easement for the road is. So, there's actually a pretty good sized buffer of trees.
So, there's, so from forty-five feet, then it's fifty feet from there?
It's about forty.
Or is it forty-five feet from the?
There's forty-five feet from your mailbox, and then the fifty foot for the road is, I mean, the road's only twenty-five, but there's a fifty foot right away.
That's, I'm just trying to like gauge like where exactly, cause it turns my lot effectively into now kinda like a corner lot. So, I'm just trying to understand like where exactly does it go? And then that buffer that's essentially, is almost like taken by domain, because we've been maintaining it, is there opportunity that it gets caught? Cause I, I don't, I, it's hard to talk in the plan if that part is part of that behind lot.
I can meet you at your house and show you, if you'd like.
If, if you're claiming some kinda adverse possession of the property, that's not for us to.
No, no, I'm just, I'm just trying to understand where the road goes, because it's.
Yeah.
Yeah.
The, the, the curve of that road is the back end of my property, so I'm just trying to understand where does it go?
So, you're necessarily a prostitute?
Yeah.
That is, yes.
So, you're, yeah, you're kinda asking about this piece.
That's, that, right, that's what I meant, yeah. Right, which is right now, I believe, is the, is the trees, I think so.
And we can talk about that property, right?
I think generally everything else that I would have concerns about, you guys have already brought up. It is potentially thirty-six cars, but as I know, it's not thirty-six cars. Um, and then that's a straightway, where in front of my house is a complete straightway, which tends to be faster traffic. So, just understanding the additional traffic pattern. Imagine those on Aldrich, that are on that side of Aldrich, would probably now use that road as another cut through to get out to Route nine, as opposed to going over the one-way bridge, cause it is challenging from the fall and there's our monster additional foliage, and seeing around them a bit. So, I appreciate your comments on the, on the traffic questions.
Do you, do you typically go out Aldrich or go out Route nine?
Fifty-fifty.
When you're, when you're going to town?
Fifty-fifty. Yep.
Yep.
And, and when you're on Aldrich, what's your experience in the wintertime when there's significant snow?
But I, I personally avoid Aldrich in the winter, just because of plowing, maintaining, and then it's, it's, the visibility is just challenging with the, the curves of.
It's kind of twisty.
Um, itself, um, and then when, you know, during the spring and summer months, lots of people are trying to walk down Aldrich, which it can be pretty dangerous and such, so, but, yeah, people drive a lot faster than they should, generally.
So, you know, again, if in the wintertime, there's a, a tendency to not, to stay away from Aldrich, then that just throws more of the load onto the intersection with Route nine. So, these are, these are all of the things that are of concern to me is, is, well, I, I named the four locations, okay?
The thing I have open is, is, we didn't hear from the Board of Health. They get a copy of the plan, and it says, and two seventy.
It's about as accurate and well, so, yeah.
Well, they didn't have much to comment on then, but the, in accordance with two seventy dash eighteen B, uh, it says within thirty-five days, it's supposed to say forty-five, I, I've been advised it's a typo. At the date of submission, Board of Health shall notify the planning board of its approval or disapproval of the preliminary plan, if disapproved, to lift its reasons in writing. We haven't heard from them, we have to act, our time limit is running out. I'm gonna say that that, you know, if they're not gonna comment, then it's a constructive approval as far as we're concerned, as far as their comments. And then, uh, within forty-five days, date of submission, preliminary applicant, preliminary plan, planning board shall approve or approve of modifications suggested by the board agreed upon with the applicant, um, and shall state detailed reasons of any disapproval. And then we shall file a certificate of action with the town clerk and send notice of action by certified mail. Now, the preliminary plan is not needed for a definitive plan. You could, could've gone right ahead and filed the definitive. The definitive is really for the town's benefit. So, we get some idea of what you're do- planning to do, uh, your timeframe, and it gives us a chance to comment about a plan and weigh in on it before the definitive gets filed and, you know, starts locking everything down in, in concrete. I, I think that we've got everything under two seventy dash seventeen A contents, all the information that's requested for this plan, and the other st- uh, information submitted by other boards review are before us. We don't really have any substantial issues with this. You know, they're all the things that are, that are, that might become of issue or gonna be part of the engineering with the definitive plan, where we have more of a dec- decision to, to actually make at that time. I, I think that everything is here for us to make, uh, an action tonight. We vote to approve the preliminary plan. Does anybody have any thoughts that that is not the case?
Uh, I don't have a thought that it's not the case, but I, I would like to go back to, um, homeowners concerned about the, the location. The one requirement for the preliminary is, um, to stake the proposed, the center line of the proposed roadway. So, if you can put a flag or a, or a marker at, at each end to identify where the center line of this road will be, um, as, uh, part of the preliminary, that will help with all of the people being aware, to be knowledgeable.
So, that would be under C, approval with modification? Or you wanna put it off for two weeks and have it staked first and have it returned?
Oh, uh, no, no, I, I'm not, I don't need to put it off, I'm just, just, that's a requirement under, uh, two seventeen B, uh, two seven oh seventeen B, is just to stake the, the center line so people know where it is.
So, it's not just at the spot where it leaves the road, but along the passage, given that there's that big bend?
The term is adequately and accurately marked, sufficient for identification. Okay.
So, you probably wanna get past the, the bend at least in order.
So, you probably wanna get past the, the bend at least, in order to have the homeowners know.
Well, we've got somebody that, that's expressed concern, and, and your offer to, to go there in person is great.
Yeah.
Do that, but...
I'm gonna get out there and sort it out.
Yeah, throw some, throw some flags down.
Any other concerns? Anybody, what's to bring forward? All right, I'm gonna make then...
Make them go to...
I'm sorry, say again?
Do we have any in, Alex Lowridge?
Oh, we have someone up there, just, do they have any comment?
Um, yeah, I did open it to the, the public in the room, I'll open it to the public on the GoTo universe. If there's anybody up on GoTo tonight that has been listening to what's going on and wishes to make a comment on this application, please green up and we'll hear what you have to say. I don't see anything, any action up there, so, uh, we'll move up past that then. One thing I don't have is any kind of approval document with the stuff here tonight.
Yeah, I could ask them about that earlier today.
So, if there's approval document, 'cause it says we show five, file a certificate of action, we're gonna have to put together a document and then have everybody stop it and sign it, so we can file it with the clerk.
Well, who would have asked you to report?
No. We'll bring amendment afterwards.
Oh, you could do a single, single...
We can either authorize single signatory, or all of us can drop by and sign it. Why don't we authorize a single signatory? We go from there, okay. I make a motion then, that we approve the preliminary subdivision plan for Jason LaFleur, for, what was the name of this thing again? Mishi Moon Path. Going to plans in front of us dated five-nine of two thousand twenty-five, so if you're gonna make, you know, modifications with the definitive plan, of course, you know, we'll, we'll look at those, but we're approving the preliminary based on the, the plans that are before us, and, uh, I made a motion to, to approve it. Subject two, showing the center line for the, the roadway entrance onto Aldrich.
And, and Jason LaFleur.
And Jason LaFleur. So, the, the, the center line for the two points of entrance on the two existing public streets.
And I'll show her, I'll put another stake by the back of her lane.
Aldrich and Jason's.
Right.
So, motion's made, it's seconded.
I'll second.
Seconded by Mr. Hoffer, made a sec, motion made it seconded, any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I'll move it to a vote all in favor. Aye, Director Cho, five-zero-zero. What are your questions? What are your questions, sir?
Actually, if you, if, uh, Mike, if you could just repeat your four concerns, please?
The four locations, one is the intersection, um, of Meadow Pond Road and Route Nine, specifically the line of sight, and, and I'll reiterate that the traffic there is well above speed limit, especially coming from Belcher Town, you know, from the west, they're coming up the rise, and, and it's, it's not good. Second issue is the width of Aldrich itself, fourteen feet, seven inches, um, or sixteen feet, whatever you meant you, you, you have here. Number three is the, the one-way bridge on Aldrich, and then number four is the actual intersection of Aldrich with Mill Valley as an acute angle.
And that's up here.
Correct.
Yes.
It comes in at an acute angle, and now we're gonna be increasing the, the traffic load there. It should be a very simple thing, but I wanna make sure that it's addressed, um, and that we, we, we know what we're dealing with here.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay.
Appreciate that.
Thank you.
All right, good night.
Thank you very much.
Where's, which way did Doug go out?
I could see there.
Right there.
Which way did Doug go out?
Uh, I was doing whatever. Did he go out that way, Doug, or?
He went out that way.
Should I go touch him?
Yeah. You wanna, uh, send that map back down?
Can I hang onto it?
Sure.
When the final comes through, I wanna compare them.
Sure.
I'm, I'm right out of all that, so...
No, we're gonna come in.
I didn't do that, did I?
No, we're gonna come in.
All right, I guess we're gonna come in and sign it, and we're gonna drag Mr. Doug back in here and find out what the form of it's gonna be. I won't be able to come in till Friday. Mr. Doug? Um, procedural question. We, we, um, approved the preliminary subdivision plan, but we didn't have an approval or an action document.
Oh, oh, we will have one for you to sign.
All right, uh, so you're gonna prepare that, and it's gonna be at the, be at the planning board, and everybody could please drop in and, and sign that in the next couple of days for, so it can be available for Mr. LaFleur. They call here a certificate of action, but, um, it, there was nothing in the file. Okay, the next thing on the agenda is, uh, the subdivision regulations again. Now, we wanted to give the select board a chance to know what we're doing, before we enact them, and then not, you know, have them raising questions afterwards of, well, I didn't know you were gonna do that, and, um, since, you know, this is not going to town meeting, there could very well be things going on that nobody in the world is paying attention to, except the few developers we have that are actually developing in town, and even they haven't weighed in on this thing. So, if it hasn't been up before the select board yet, and that's what we wanted to wait for, and that's why we didn't take any action the last meeting, there's no reason for us to take action on it to now, until we hear from them.
Yeah, I...
We want the final drawings and forms, too?
We, we have the final drawings, um...
They're up.
And I haven't, I haven't looked on the forms yet.
But we said we would approve it...
We were gonna go ahead.
With, with just the critical forms being done, and we will then phase in the lesser forms as, as required.
All right, so we'll be in a better position next, if we wait two more weeks. The select board, too, the, the last meeting, they were a little on the busy side, because they had contract negotiations with the police department. So, they had a bunch of people in there from out of town, and I know they were trying to get to that part of their meeting, and, uh, 'cause they were gonna be there talking for a while, and it's gonna probably be a long night for them, so, uh, subdivision regulations didn't get reviewed.
Yeah, uh, July seventh, uh, it's more tentatively scheduled than, um, for the full sort. I've written in a summary, and I sent them the draft, pre, not the draft, but then also a comparative, a deadline document that came up to a hundred and thirty-six pages, which, 'cause it shows that it needs changing this, so, um, you know, they, if, if they care to, they can look at it, but...
So, they'd be seeing that on the seventh, or voting on, or...
No, they're, we're just gonna discuss it.
Okay.
Yeah, well, basically, I think, you know, it tells them, you have what we're doing, we haven't revised it in twenty-five years, and we've, we've, um, gone through it piece by piece multiple times, and gotten input from a lot of different people.
Sorry.
My things up.
So, what, what's, what's our next meeting after the seventh?
The eighth.
The eighth.
Yeah, that's the...
So, do we need to open the public hearing and then continue it to the eighth?
We need to continue the public hearing, 'cause we continued it to today.
Right.
So, um, we need to now continue to, what was the date, you said July what?
Uh, eighth.
Eighth. At seven o'clock? Make a motion then, that we continue our public hearing for the review of the revised subdivision regulations, to continue for the second time to July eighth, twenty, twenty-five, at seven o'clock. And that's seconded by Elizabeth, motion made and seconded. Any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I'll move it to a vote all in favor.
Aye.
Aye, Director Cho, five-zero-zero. So, that's moved. And the other ministerial things we have are the minutes. People had a chance to review the minutes, they were sent out ahead of time, and you had your chance to make any edits, edits, deletion, or changes. Are there any further changes that anybody wants to make tonight? Hearing none, I'll move it to a vote then, um, I, I'll make a motion, we approve the minutes of June tenth, two thousand twenty-five, as written, and that's, well, seconded by, by Bjorn. So, the most main, seconded, for discussion on the motion. Hearing none, I'll move it to a vote all in favor. Aye, Director Cho, five-zero-zero. I'll start those that way. Bills, we have one bill for a hundred and seventy-three dollars and thirteen cents for WB Mason. We've been buying office supplies again. You can't...
How many, how many pages were the subdivision regulations?
How, you, well, I, I, how many times have I, I've suggested we just, we should all walk around this building and just steal them from, you know, other offices in town walling, you know?
You'd be surprised how many paper clips I took up on the floor.
Okay, I'm gonna pass around a bill for endorsement. How about the, the town, um, Sheriff's shed down at the dump? We can look for office supplies down there, sometimes they have office supplies. I kept working almost two whole years after I was gonna retire, just to, you know, swipe office supplies, you know? Prepare for my next career. Mr. Doug, the, uh, town planners' report, would you like to tell us what's going on in?
Well, you mentioned of, of the dump reminded me of the trash gallon that was, uh, you can have, uh, I'm sure you read about it in the sun. It was actually, uh...
Was it fun?
Yeah, it was pretty good, probably for you people there, and, um, and the artists all explained their, um, heroes, and, you know, this great community activity, and people from, uh, of Haiti. Yeah, it was, it was fun, and it had a little fashion show of, you know, the, all the rubbish, rubbish attire that people came up with, so, that was fun, nice little local event on a Friday afternoon. Uh, economy stuff, um, this Friday, a bunch of us of, you know, creative economy committee, uh, we're gonna meet in, in, like, the Chamber of Commerce, um, they keep changing their executive director, so, uh, we get dropped every time it changes. And once you build a relationship with them, we have a very good relationship now with the Amherst Chamber of Commerce, uh, it helps that every executive director is built on rhythm, um, and, uh, we're gonna be having a nice follow-up meeting with them in a couple of weeks, July, it seems so far, uh, so that, that'll, that'll be... Grants, you might or might not have heard that our grant administrator has departed, so, uh, those things are, now I'm trying to catch up to where, where they were left off, um, for some of them anyway, so...
Oh, no.
So, you have, like, solitary office today?
Yeah, I certainly hope that, uh, inflation is fine soon. It's been twenty-seven years saying, this is a great manager in town, and, uh, we got him in five months later, but, that's, that's just the nature of life, I guess. So, anyway, um, I'm, I'm gonna kind of catch up on where things were, and, well, the recording thing is a need to be done, and that takes some time. Cannabis, social equity policy, this thing that states, oh, you guys have stuff in order, um, three years ago, and they never gave us any guidelines, um, we're now getting, making some progress with those, so I'm kind of reviewing things, adjusting, and then you go off to a lawyer, she marks them up, and, um, that'll be done soon. And our MVP project, uh, the Housing Trust, is, we're starting to get, starting to get started, um, I don't know what progress to the speaker yet, but that work is getting done. Master Plan Index, the website that we have agreed for, um, our staff person at PVPC was on leave for about six weeks, but now he's back, uh, we picked that meeting up tomorrow, and, um, sort of figure out what everyone's doing, you know, it's, it's a matter of taking all the different segments of the master plan and identifying this whole matrix of who's, who's the primary party responsible of guiding it, um, and then trying to have an index, and maybe something that, you can link and say, okay, I wanna know about transportation, who's in charge, and, um, or how does this link to conservation, or something else. And I think we'll have, um, some, be able to make use of Alex, who I see is on the meeting, you met him last time, and our other intern, who is not on the meeting, um, that we'll be able to use them to help us out with that. Lake Wallace Sensory Trail is nearly completely finished, I think we're just kind of dressing up a few things. We have had some vandalism over there.
Yeah.
And so, we're trying to figure out what to do about that, and various suggestions come up, everything from electrified rails to, um, cameras and, um, I don't know, but, you know, maybe it's just a seasonal thing, end of, end of the, the school year, I don't know, but, uh, there's been, uh, a number of things done, you know, we have to work to repair them now, and our friends group has gotten a couple of donations, and so, anybody out there who wants to contribute to Lake Wallace Sensory Trail meet that's done, um, just, uh, send a chapter to town, a belcher town, with a note, Lake Wallace Sensory Trail on it, and, uh, stick it in there, and have something worth it. And it's a brief report, but I think that's gonna stop at this time.
Well, following up with the marijuana, um, I saw in the paper that the Cannabis Commission is promising they're gonna have the rules out for social cafes by this October, so they're expecting, I guess, the summer now that they've been reorganized and have got everything straightened out in Boston, uh, that they're gonna tackle that, so we're gonna have to be thinking this fall about how we're gonna approach that subject, in terms of zoning.
Yeah, we, we might wanna, well, yeah, we, with the new regulations, we'll have to probably figure out how to, to see if there's any need to change our zone.
It's pretty hard for us to get too far out in front of it without knowing what the regulations are gonna say.
Exactly.
So, um, I, I just wanted to, to, to bring out that that's percolating too, and it's gonna hit us here probably by next year. Leonard, is there anything you would like to share with the board tonight?
No, I have nothing to add.
You want, is there anything you would like to share?
Not, not...
Elizabeth? I'm all set.
Dwight, Dwight Days was a success.
I think it was.
Thank you. I enjoyed it.
Good, great.
Yeah, you're good.
We went an hour and ten minutes, but we only have one thing on the agenda. We managed to milk it for an hour. With that, I'll make a motion that we adjourn the meeting.
I'll second.
Motion made and seconded, no discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Mary Ann, you can turn off the, uh, the program.